Hello, I'm Harry Gross and I'd like to welcome you to 542 Maine. Today, we're talking with Heather Gracy, who is the city of Dunedin's newest city commissioner.
Right.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me.
Heather, why don't we get started? You were elected at the last election, and I think they might have changed the time when those elections are held. How long have you actually been on the commission now?
This week, Harry, it will mark eight months.
Eight months.
Eight months.
Eight months. And I'm assuming you jumped in feet first and...
I jumped in feet first with my time and my attention. I am still learning, and I like to listen as much. God gave us two ears and one mouth, is what my grandmother always told me. So, I like to listen as much as I can and make sure I'm forming the right opinions and to make the right decisions that I feel are important to me, and then, of course, extrapolate into our community.
That's a good philosophy. I'll have to remember that. The one thing I've always noticed about our city commissioners over the years is they come from the community, a variety of different backgrounds. You seldom if ever see anybody who came from government as their background. So, there's really not a training program that I'm aware of when somebody decides to step up and run for this office. What is your background?
I am a Florida State University graduate, 1992. I majored in English, and that enabled...
Me too.
Thank you very much. Great minds. I was able to take that to a mutual fund company upon graduation in St. Petersburg. I lived in Dunedin and commuted over there. And I think I got in at the right time with that company because they were just assumed by a much larger mutual fund company that was based in San Francisco. And what I thought was going to be my job of writing letters and responding to shareholders with fund performance, account questions, legal registrations, actually enabled me to move into management and to travel to San Francisco and to learn the way Californians do things and to see different cities. And that was an experience in and of itself. It enabled me to manage people and to determine whether I wanted to continue on climbing that corporate ladder. And I ended up being an analyst in the legal department where I assisted with the board book and a lot of governance with respect to the boards of directors for the different funds. And in many instances, I would be watching local government and saying, "That's not too different from how a local government runs." When you have a strong city manager like we do, and I kind of think of the commission as a board of directors. And I've seen that. I know what they expect. I know how they expect it. And so, that was kind of a card I put, you know, in my deck thinking, "One day, that might be neat to do. Dunedin's such a neat little town." And that's how the kind of thought process was started, I think, in my mind.
So, that working with boards of directors is... And it is similar to a certain extent, I think, because you do have to put information together, give the boards the information they need to make decisions.
Right.
Recommend policies.
Recommend policies. And the most important thing for me as a commissioner and a Fortune 500 board member would be accountability and answering to the shareholders, just as, you know, I know I'm answering to our residents.
Now, I don't think most people, when they're sitting home watching a city commission meeting on television, or if they come down to City Hall and watch it, I don't know that they always get the sense of how much preparation goes into making oneself ready for those meetings. I remember getting agenda packets together, and every week, they might be the size of a telephone book.
Yes.
I mean, they're just huge. You get them on Friday, I believe.
Get them on Fridays.
And you pretty much have to be completely familiar with it in time for the meeting Thursday.
Right.
Did you know that before you...
I did. I was looking at the same package that the commission would receive. I would look at it at dunedin.gov.com because, you know, it's all transparent. It has public records.
Oh, yes.
So, I would look at it from my tablet or my computer and try to familiarize myself that way. And Rob was always very courteous and before I was on the commission, had met with me one or two times and was able to answer questions. And all the directors were very generous with their time and doing the same thing. So, it was looking at the same types of things and imagining, "Okay, if I'm making this vote, how would I? How would I? And what would take... I would take into consideration to arrive at that decision." But you're right, Harry, there's a lot of time that goes into it.
Yeah, it is.
And that's one of the questions I get a lot is, you know, "How much time do you have to devote to this?" It's not, you know, "Is it a full-time job?" And one, you could make it that. But I think that's where a lot of the listening comes in. And I'll tell you that since I've arrived here at City Hall, that the staff has just been overwhelmingly helpful with answering questions and making themselves available with any question, comment, concern that I might have. And there's been a few. So, it's been, you know, "Should I call now? Yes, I need to have this answer because it hinges on a Thursday night." And so, and there's some things that I walk in on Thursday night and I don't know how I'm going to vote on certain things. And again, that's part of that process of listening and careful consideration for where we are.
There's always that possibility that you're going to hear something at the meeting that you hadn't considered before.
I like to leave room for that possibility, absolutely.
Yeah. And I've seen that happen quite a few times at city commission meetings where commissioners would be prepared, and some new piece of information might be presented from a member of the public that hadn't been considered, and the discussion just goes off.
It does. Yeah. You like to think you know what's going on, and for the most part, I think that we all do. But that public element and those public hearings are times where you have to value and take that input and plug it into the equation. It's important.
It seems it's a big decision to make to decide to run for city commission. And what I've seen for many years is the people who make that decision and run and become commissioners are not people who are just sitting around not doing anything with their lives to start with. They're usually pretty committed to other causes. They're usually pretty busy, business owners, you name it. So, I'm always curious about what's the catalyst? What prompts somebody to finally say, "You know, I need to get involved. I think I'm going to put myself out there." Because you do put yourself out there.
In many ways.
"I'm going to run. You know, you might win, you might lose, but..." I'm just curious, in your case, what was that?
It was a lot of growing up and watching my children, our children grow up in Dunedin. We've used all of our services quite a bit. And when you look at those services in connection with the economy and how that's taken such a drop over the past five years, five, six years, I just felt like I was asking more questions of, "Wait a minute, why can't we do a bike lane here? My children are riding this. A lot of children, a lot of adults are riding." And so, it was things like bike lanes and parks where I find solitude and respite and a lot of enjoyment there, as well as, I think, most of our citizens. And I saw that maybe diminishing just a bit, and I started talking about it. That's all I was doing was really venting or talking about, "Wow, I wish, I wish." And being of service in other capacities for my children's school, the church, different nonprofit organizations. It was, "Well, you know, then do something about it," kind of thing. And I was like, "Well, if I don't put my money where my mouth is, I might always regret this." And that was one of the things that really was a sticking point with me. If I don't try, I might regret it. It's always been in my back pocket. I thought perhaps, you know, when children are out of the house and away at school and are grown up, I'll have more time to do this. But it hasn't really... It's only really helped, I think, my family. I think my children now see, "Hey, Mom has a pretty important role to play, and I'm going to help her do that." And it involves them within their own community, taking them to some ribbon cuttings. And it's neat to watch my TV every once in a while because they do get bored with that level of entertainment, I suppose. So, it's been very rewarding, but I knew that if I didn't try it, that I would regret it. And so, in doing so, I'm searching for, you know, rewards for the city and really for our community and making sure that Dunedin is represented from the oldest to the youngest, from the south to the north and east to the west.
Nice. You mentioned what you would have thought if you hadn't tried it. As an English major, you'll probably recognize the road not taken.
Yes, that was...
That made all the difference.
A poem, yeah. My grandfather was big on that one. So, in looking to my family, because, you know, my family, my husband's family have been here since the 50s, and Dunedin's a community of service.
And that TV time is good. I remember my, at that time, five-year-old grandson, when he saw me on television the first time, asked me if I knew SpongeBob.
Right. That's important, Harry.
That's right. That was his take on it. Now, eight months on the job, and if I have this correctly, once your first commission meeting, they do old business, then they break, and then the new commissioners are sworn in, and you sit down and give your welcoming remarks, and you start voting on things.
Yeah.
So, you jump in feet first.
We did.
You're immersed in the job.
And, well, I can just tell you, the swearing in was a separate ceremony. It wasn't part of an official meeting. I shouldn't say official. It was a special swearing in for the mayor, Commissioner Skiles, and I. And then, what proceeded to be my first meeting was a real mixed bag. And I was very appreciative that our former city attorney was able to kind of sit down with me and say, "Commissioner..." And I'm, by the way, getting used to that title that sometimes I don't realize. And I just want to make sure you're clued into a quasi-judicial process because we were voting on a land use matter.
Oh, yes.
And, you know, you want to listen to the public, you really do, but it's more like a courtroom proceeding. And there are attorneys in the rooms. Since I'm married to one that doesn't frighten me, but it was, you know, "Here's how you need to couch this. Here's the understanding, and here's the law. And within our codes, certain things meet code and certain establishments." So, I had that one as my first meeting, and that was a packed house. So, it's always very intimidating when you're in the big green chair. And there's folks coming in and telling you what they want and how that's going to affect their quality of life. And so, it can be kind of touchy at times.
That's a good point. I mean, and a lot of people don't realize that when you get into those quasi-judicial hearings, you may want to decide or vote in a certain way, but often, you're constrained by laws and codes and things that allow things that you personally may not like to see happen.
Right.
And at that point, the only thing you can do is try to go back and ask the question, "Should this be changed for the future?"
But it doesn't help that particular transaction.
No, it doesn't. And a lot of people end up upset by it, but they don't necessarily recognize that the commission is very often constrained in those situations and what it can do.
Right. And to the extent that we can, it's... I know that staff does recognize that. Mr. Rice has, I think, shown me so much with respect to our codes and how we help both sides achieve what they want. If that's a barrier, or if that's some type of landscaping issue, how can we at least make what's coming in part of who we are? So, it does gain acceptance.
And that's one of the great things, I think, about Dunedin. It's how can we work with the residents, not just how can we get them to obey the rules?
Right.
You know, it's like, "What can we do to make this a good situation for everybody?"
I agree. How can we say yes and make sure that yes is appealing?
Yeah. And I've seen that from the, you know, from the commission right down to the staff people in the field, that attitude seems to prevail, which is a good thing. Now, eight months, and you sort of, you answered some of this, I think, already. What, so far, what have you liked best about the job?
Meeting people, talking with them, understanding, you know, what's meaningful in their lives and how I can be of service to them. For me, it's much, much about the people and the places that we have and the events that we have, services that we offer, because that's what brings the community, I think, together. That's what gives us that common bond. And when those things are trending like that, I like to be a part of that and find out, "Well, how do we make that better?" And if, you know, listen, it's not all rosy sometimes out there, and so, it's listening to, you know, some public safety matters and making sure that you're showing them empathy and that you care, because I do. If that certain thing happened in my neighborhood, which, hey, it could, I want to be responsive to that and responsive to the residents. So, carrying out those things that I campaigned on is very important to me and making sure that I'm within our city and approachable. That's very important, and that's what pleases me.
That's good. And in Dunedin, a town like Dunedin, commissioners are very accessible, so it's...
We are.
Liking to interact with the people is, you know, is a good thing.
It is. And showing them I'm just an everyday person, you know, a mother. And I'm blessed enough to be able to stay at home and not have, you know, a job outside of the children and maintaining the house, so...
I was going to say, "You have one now."
Yeah. I do, right.
Yeah.
It is, and it's a good one.
Yes.
And it pleases me every day, blessed by it. And hopefully, you know, even adding more to a mentor process for not only my children, but the friends of my children and the kids in our community. Pick a park, and they're there, you know? And to watch them enjoy that is... That's what life's about, is enjoying where you're at.
We're going to take a break. We'll be back with more 542 Maine in just a moment.
If a citywide emergency were to happen, how would you find out about proper procedures during a critical event? The city of Dunedin, which is dedicated to quality service, has contracted with Code Red to better inform our citizens in the event of an emergency. Code Red is an invaluable service that delivers a pre-recorded phone message from your city's emergency operations center describing the situation to residents and businesses directly or by leaving a message on an answering machine in the affected area. If you reside or own property within the incorporated limits of the city of Dunedin and would like to receive Code Red emergency messages, visit the city's website at dunedin.gov.com and click on the Emergency Services link on the left side of the homepage. To stay informed in the event of a citywide emergency, sign up for the new Code Red notification system through the city's website, dunedin.gov. Get inside the fitness rooms at the Dunedin Community Center. You'll find a fully equipped workout area with Nautilus machines, cardio equipment, and free weights. There's also an exercise studio with a spring floor for jazzercise, dance, and martial arts classes. Come in and ask about a program designed for your fitness needs. Get inside the Dunedin Community Center.
What would you, what have you found to be the most difficult aspect of the job of being a city commissioner?
Well, besides that quasi-judicial process, you know, budget isn't all a rosy picture. And this past year, you know, we've been in between finance directors and understanding, you know, where we are within this economy is a little tough. And so, watching that budget process and being a part of it and determining, you know, policy levels and whether it's, you know, reserves or recommendations on funding certain groups has been a challenge. And it will continue, I know, to be a challenge.
It's interesting, too, because I've noticed, you know, you read in the paper almost every day that there's an uptick in the economy, but then, when you read about the local government news, no matter what city it is or the county, it doesn't seem like that uptick has found its way to local government yet.
You're right. There seems to be a lag time between what we're reading in the paper and what, you know, we're hearing on TV about the economy getting better. And I certainly hope it does. But my understanding, especially from the property appraiser and the different county governments, or the different county departments there are, is that is going to create, like, maybe almost 18 months to a year before municipalities like Dunedin are going to see that and realize that uptick.
Yeah. And it does seem to go in cycles, so I guess we can always look forward to, you know, things getting better, but sometimes it just takes, you know, it's like, "Can't they do it now?"
Right. Well, exactly. And that's, you know, that's one of the things I campaigned on and I looked at. Let's look at what's happening right now, but don't take your eye off the future, you know? And this can get better, and we all hope that it does. But the lessons, I think, that we've learned through this last economy have been insurmountable. And a lot of those lessons need to be taken to heart, even if things do get better.
Absolutely. And I want to talk about the future a little bit, but staying in now, right now, what would you say are a couple of the major issues on the city commission's plate?
I think right now, certainly, our budget for fiscal year '14 and for '15 is important to realize. Looking at that in a dual aspect has been helpful because I think it helps us be proactive. And I think another area where we can show some proactive approaches and where the commission... This commission will need to be a leader, is within our relationship with the Blue Jays and what that property at 373 Douglas, ultimately, what happens to that. And so, that, I know, is going to be a challenge for us. And in keeping with that idea of, you know, perhaps that stadium, perhaps that 373 Douglas property isn't being used by a major league team, well, then, what do we do with it? And knowing that we need a... And I'm on board with this. A municipal services annex, something to replace that building at 750, you know? Could that be a viable location? You know, you have conference rooms over there, training facility. What can be done with that? So, in taking those projects and finding out what the viability is to use and replenish what's there rather than build new.
That's, yeah, that's a good thought. I mean, on the one hand, I guess it's scary to think about life after the Blue Jays because they've been part of the community for so long. But if you, if that does become a possibility, then it never hurts to have a Plan B and something that would put an emphasis on the south side of Dunedin, you know, in a positive way.
Oh, sure. Right. And, you know, it's right next to our award-winning library. Well, I think it's award-winning. We spend much, a lot of hours there, enjoy it. And just to go back to the Blue Jays, Harry, as I've been watching this unfold and some of the inaction, it's frustrating, but at the same time, here's an organization, the Blue Jays, who has been a terrific friend to our city. And if I put that in terms of a neighborhood, it's like having a neighbor for 30-some years. Maybe they just got a better job offer somewhere. And so, I don't begrudge them one bit. You know, I would like to see my neighbor go and do bigger and better things and accomplish what their dreams and goals are. And so, in keeping with that, that's really the mindset that I have with the Blue Jays. If they stay, that is wonderful for us. I'd welcome that, too. But if they do need to leave us, then I think that it's prudent for our community, and it behooves us to say, you know, "Thanks for being here with us."
Yeah, leave on good terms.
Oh, definitely.
And, you know, still support them and...
Oh, right.
Look at, you know, when you look, look at who your new neighbor's going to be and, you know, welcome that neighbor, too, whoever that might be.
Yeah. I know there's a lot of input from our community, and we'll continue to hear that input on, you know, Plan Bs, Plan Cs. We'll probably even hear suggestions taking us all the way to Z. And they should be looked at.
Yeah.
They should be considered.
Oh, I think, yeah. I mean, it's one of those things, like I said, with the commission meeting, somebody is always going to bring something to the table that you hadn't considered.
Right.
And you get those aha moments, like, "Gee, where was that idea when I was brainstorming this?" You know? And then, you can go off in a direction you never thought of before, you know?
And Dunedin's, I think, always been a pioneer in that vein. You know, that's the spirit of our city.
Well, who would have thought that a little town like this would have gotten a spring training franchise in the first place, you know, back in the 70s?
Exactly.
It's, you know, so if that happened, there's no reason something just as good couldn't happen, I think.
Agreed, yeah.
Talking about getting back to the economy a little bit, do you think, as a city commissioner, what role do you think, if any, local government has in hopefully positively influencing the economy of a community? And can local government play a role in creating an environment in which the business community can thrive?
Well, yeah, I think that local government should certainly take and have a heavy hand in the development of business. I think one of the examples I can give you right now is using our private partners like The Chamber, like the Visit Dunedin group, and making sure that with a little bit of funding, combined with their expertise, because I don't think it should be expertise on the staff. There are people in business, men and women out there, who have been doing this for many, many years and who are very successful at it, and to leverage their expertise with what they know and what works in our city. So, I think that the city should come together for a leadership role and be able to leverage off of that role. So, if it's funding that they need with the prudent amounts is important, I think, because Dunedin is all about our community, but to the tourist, it's about, you know, them getting on an airplane and spending thousands of dollars to come enjoy our sand at Honey Moon Island and this weather. That sells itself. And so, it's been rewarding to see, you know, our economic development move towards a tourism and commerce approach because I think that's really where we are as we plan our corridors. The corridor planning and the corridor improvements are another way that our city helps stimulate that economy and helps grow business. I know some of the additions that they've done on Patricia Avenue have been very important in making that attractive.
That's beautiful down there, by the way. I just saw it the first time the other day.
They're nice. Yeah. And that's one of the things, I think, that our city can help achieve that, is creating that look and creating that partnership with, say, Anshiva Corporation coming in. That's, that was a nice addition. And what I like about it is it's way over in Southern Virginia, you know? So, it isn't part of our downtown. It is growing the other parts of the city. And, you know, we might see new business prop up over there because of 140 new jobs coming in there. So, the extent that our city can help attract jobs certainly is going to be on the city to help them come in and to form partnerships.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's good because I, you know, and when you talked about the other corridors, whenever I'm downtown, it always looks like it's alive. And there's other cities that I visit, and I'm thinking of one in particular. I'm not going to say where it is, but they have a really beautiful, quaint little downtown. But the last time I was there, I saw a lot of vacant storefronts. Not only don't I see that in Dunedin, but I don't see it all over Dunedin. I mean, I don't see it, I don't see it on the 580 corridor. I don't see it, you know, we just was real excited to see Frenchies coming in on the Causeway. And it seems like Dunedin still is an attractor for business.
Oh, I agree with you.
All around. And I think, you know, that says a lot about the city.
I think that the Frenchies restaurants, and there are two, by the way, that are heading, I think, upstream is kind of the fun term we're using, to come over, because they have had success on Clearwater Beach. And I think that they've seen, "Hey, Dunedin is a player, and people are going there." And they know the locals will be there anyway. I've been to the island outpost, the new island outpost. I enjoyed it very much. And you know what? Parking is a good problem to have, I suppose, over there right now.
Yeah, yeah.
But they do have their second business coming in here at Skinner and 580.
Melso.
So, that's helpful as well. Another development, another restaurant, which really just adds to, you know, the traveler's experience.
Right. Right, because people do come, you know, they might come for the beach, or they might come for a spring training game. a spring training game right, you know, right now, but it's, they still need to have other things to do while they're here. And when they discover what else this city has to offer, I think, you know, try to give them not too many reasons to leave Dunedin when they're, when they're here.
And to keep them right here.
Talk about the future a little bit, and I know you're one commissioner, and the decision choice made is part of a public body of five people. If you had ultimate authority in all matters relating to the city of Dunedin, and I can tell by your comments so far and your demeanor that that is the furthest thing for your mind.
You're right.
What type of future would you create for the city?
Well, I suppose if we had ultimate authority, then perhaps exploring some different water-type experiences, you know, within the sound, ones that are, of course, ecologically safe and sound, and, but more things to do on the water. I think a lot of times, certain things are held back because of, you know, state authorities or regulatory agencies. And so that, I think, might take the handcuffs off a little bit and explore some things to do, wider things to do on our beaches, off our parks. But you're right, Harry, that's one of the things, I can't imagine that much type of authority, but Dunedin does dream big, and...
They do. It's amazing. I told, I told somebody that had recently, at that time, gotten a job with the city, who came from a bigger organization. I said, "The thing, the thing that you're really going to like about working here is that if you get up in the morning and have a great idea that's really going to be beneficial to the city, there's a good chance you can have it implemented by the time you go home from work." And it just seems like things, good ideas move pretty fast in Dunedin.
It is. It's that mindset of trying to say yes, as much as, you know, as much as we can within the realms of success.
Now, given all the challenges that the city has, and, you know, the good points and the bad points, when you envision Dunedin in years to come, are you worried or are you optimistic? And why would, why would you give the answer you're going to give?
Yeah, I'm not worried. And I can't give you a concrete reason as to why, because, you know, I'm a mother, and I think that's our job a lot of times, is to worry. But, you know, I'm optimistic, and I think to be a leader in 34698, you have to have that level of optimism and a whole lot of reality. So that's, that's where I'm at. I'd like to see these corridors beautified and with offices and retail and just a lot of, not too much growth, but enough to empty, to make those empty storefronts viable again and to keep us a really vibrant city that we are within Pinellas County. A lot of redevelopment is questionable. I know that redevelopment is growth within the city, but our codes are going to help us keep that, that bay and keep it, I think, the way Dunedin wants to see it, the way we've heard from our residents, what's too big, what won't work where, and things of that sort. So I'm optimistic about our future with our walkability, with our connections, with the codes, and really with the staff that we have in place that can, can keep us on that road to, you know, writing new success stories within our book.
I know Dunedin put a lot of time and effort into revamping the codes for just the reasons you're, you're talking about. And for somebody that is, like myself, that grew up in Dunedin and, you know, spent most of my life here, it's, you know, it's always been very, made me feel optimistic to see the caliber of the people and the commitment of the people that come in at your level and at the staff level, too. And it just seems like you all work together very well. And one thing we didn't talk about was the, you talked about the amount of listening you want to do, and I know you probably haven't made the rounds of all of the advisory committees yet, but people may not be aware of how much advice the commissioners have set it up to receive from the community through those committees.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm really pleased that you brought that up. It was one of my goals as soon as I was elected to really attend even more, all of those 30-some committees that we have, and it has been a challenge to make them. I have made a few. I really would like to get into Parks and Rec, so I know they're awaiting, and that's really important to me. There's, I read every set of minutes that comes through, believe it or not, do a lot of reading, and look to them for much, much appreciated advice. They're devoting their time, effort, talent, treasure into, into that particular group, and that stands for a lot, in my mind.
Another, another reason the city works, works so well, I think, too.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the public is definitely involved. We typically ask people to respond through Facebook, through the city's Facebook account with questions that they might like to see asked at this, at these programs. And I think we have time for one. I actually read this incorrectly. It's from Matthew McCartney. He's actually asking why there are not any no-smoking signs around the playgrounds or parks in Dunedin. I know that there's some in the ballfields and the dugouts and all of that, but I guess that...
I've, that's a great question. I'm happy that he asked it. A couple others have mentioned it to me. And in one of my research, and I haven't taken this to staff, so if they're watching, it's coming, but...
A heads up.
Just a little one. It's a thing called preemption that was done at the Tallahassee level. So our state legislature has actually come in to say, "Local governments, you have no standing in this law. We're going to take it from here." And so perhaps it's time to challenge that role, and perhaps it's time to challenge that authority, because these are Dunedin parks. These belong to our citizenry. And when I'm at a park with one of my children, and I'll give you an example, I was, I was at the Spray Park, and I didn't, there was no smoking around, but it was packed because it's a popular area. And we should be setting, as adults, I think, as role models for the children. And knowing the public safety that's out there and the public health benefits from non-smoking, I think are very important. So right now, it seems as if the metal that the signs are made of has no teeth, which is perhaps one of the reasons why we don't have them. Maybe we should look at just putting them up anyway.
Yeah. It's interesting. So basically, Tallahassee has said that local governments can't pass an ordinance that...
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
We could do a whole other show on mandates from Tallahassee.
We could do it, yeah. Let's sign up for that.
That's another matter.
But there's no stopping Dunedin from doing a resolution to say that we disagree as such. And, you know, perhaps that's what's needed.
Yeah. Well, Commissioner Gracie, it has been a real pleasure talking with you, and I, I feel as I always do when I talk with members of the city commission, that the city is in good hands, and I want to thank you for joining...
Thank you, Harry. I appreciate it.
...me today and wish you all the luck in the world in this position. I, I could tell you enjoy it, and I think that, I think you're up for the challenge.
Hope so. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time today.
We've been talking to Commissioner Heather Gracie with the Dunedin City Commission, and for 542 Main, I'm Harry Gross.